King George County Board of Supervisors. I will open with an invocation and then Mr. Miller will provide the pledge. Everyone, please rise. Thank you. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have an amendment to the agenda to add a contract modification for GSA number 03212022-1400 to the FY 2324 budget. And Mr. Dines and also Ms. Hahn can explain if you would entertain that modification, that amendment.
They can explain the justification for the amendment or they can explain it when it comes time to discuss it?
Yes. All of the above.
Does anyone want to hear from Mr. Dines or Ms. Hahn in regards to the justification for? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, probably second. Do we have a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
I'm not up to the read the information yet.
Okay.
I'll just be.
Okay. Chair votes aye, and if it could please be recorded that Mr. Collins had abstained from the vote. Thank you. Any other amendments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to public comment. We will now, comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing, and we do have a number of public hearings tonight. Please, when you do come up, provide your name and your address. And I will start with the sign up sheet for the public comment. And so I have Mr. Jim Buckley first.
Good evening. Probably not a good night to raise this, but on, when you're talking budget, but I did want to raise an issue on, on rumble strips. You've seen them in the county. Matter of fact, I talked to Supervisor Collins earlier tonight about this. This is for safety, to keep vehicles on the road from crossing the center line and from coming off the road. But they've also created a unrealized problem on our narrow roads because they're forcing cyclists and they're forcing pedestrians into the road where the roads are very narrow. I ride quite a bit in the county and in many areas, including T-Town Road, Windsor Drive, Ridge Road, Dogland Road. You're forced into the traffic. You have no place to go because the, the rumble strip is right on the edge of the road. And so instead of it being a safety concern, I mean, instead of it making the road safer for pedestrian cyclists, it's making it much more dangerous. So it's really kind of unintended consequences. People realize that the roads are being used not only by vehicles, but they're also being used by pedestrians and cyclists. So what I encourage you to do, and I know this is really a responsibility of VDOT, is when you drive home tonight, when you go down Dogland Road, when you go down T-Town Road, when you go down Windsor Drive, Ridge Road, take a look at the, where those rumble strips are on the edge of the road. You cannot ride in them. And, and you, and you need at least 18 inches shoulder outside of that to be safe, to be off the road for both a pedestrian and for a cyclist. So what was intended to make the road safer, it will keep motorists on the road between the rumble strips. What was, what it is actually doing, it is also forcing cyclists and pedestrians in the road. And really, two weeks ago, when they finished them up on Dogland Road, the roads in the county are significantly more dangerous than they were previously. Thank you.
So that was all I had that signed up, although the floor is open for anyone that is here that would like to provide public comment.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I pray, I live in Presidential Heights. First, I want to thank, thank the supervisors and the county administrator for the service to the county. Well, I want to talk about the budget, which is very important to me and the rest of the community. The people of King George want to know how much the tax will be next year. The property values county-wide has increased by almost 40% after the last year reassessment. Also, I want to ask the supervisors if you have been helping Mrs. Kapka to get rid of the decal. It's okay to charge a fee when you give out the decal, but not over and over each year. Also, I think the county should not have a problem giving good salaries to the teachers, the sheriff's department, and other county workers. Also, I remember that in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, the county had no debt. Also, I remember when the rescue squad service was free. Now they charging the insurance company? Where does the money go? How about the taxes from the cigarettes in the land field? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Baird, 15316 Kings Highway, King George. First, I do want to thank the board supervisors for their hard work. I know particularly in this budget season is tough. I want to build on what a gentleman said about the rumble strips. While they are a safety measure, I think they could have fine tuned the process a little bit in installation. Couple of things come to mind. One, they were a little short of cash this year, so the installation contract did not include backfilling the gravel along the edge of the roads. So in front of my house, for example, there's over four inch drop off of the asphalt, you know, to my drive and to the adjacent area. Also, they put a rumble strip right in front of my driveway, so when I'm pulling off the road every time, it gets kind of noisy. So, good, good attempt, but they need to fine tune their process a little bit.
Hi, guys. My name's Juliana Dirts, Village Lane, King George, Virginia. It's good to see you back in action, TC Collins. I just have three things. One, I like an update on Pyramid Healthcare. Two, I am a bike rider also, and I didn't know there was a problem with the rumble strips, but in other counties, the rumble strips in the middle are flat with the pavement, so the bike riders can just go through the middle. So the rumble strips are on side and side. Cars can't get through them. It's probably cheaper because it's only half and half. And two, or three, I'd like to say that I am for micro wineries.
Hello, my name is Gail Becker, and also it's good to see you back in, in good spirits. Want to thank everyone for doing the jobs that you do. I couldn't do it. But I would like to also ask if there have been any more updates about the Pyramid Healthcare Center? And also to state that I am also for the micro wineries.
Anyone else here for public comment? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence for public comment? Okay. In that case, I will close public comment and we'll move on to reports from members of the board. Mrs. Binder.
Well, I'll lead off with the rumble strips. Mr. Granger and I actually met with a citizen concerning the noise that the rumble strip causes in front of his house on 301. And I was gonna say that you know how, you don't notice things until somebody points out something and then you start to hear it and see it and listen to it. So I've done a little traveling over the last week, going down Route 17, down 301, down Route 3, and believe it or not, I started listening to when the truck crosses the center line, and they cross the center line, not center line, the sideline, a lot more than you think they do. And that really does make a sound when you're really listening to it and the cars, but more on the truck. And a lot of the complaint was on the truck noise of, you know, it goes and it disturbs your sleep and it makes a lot of noise. I see why it's important because all of us, I'm sure at some time, especially driving on these rural roads, might, you know, lose their attention a minute, and those rumble strips do wake you up and say, hey, pay attention. But I know, I think I'll be reaching out again to, to VDOT to ask a little more clarification because may, maybe there was a process that could be reconsidered. I know it's a costly process, process to do that, so reversing their decision is probably not going to be something that we can do, but maybe bringing to their attention that this could have better been done a better way and why did you do it that way? Might, might be to ask some more questions. So I know I'll be seeking that, but I wanted to point out that it's interesting that a couple of people came to the meeting tonight to talk about it because we did meet with that citizen this week. So it, it is an issue, and I wonder how many other counties that this has been done recently that is an issue, because we do have a unique situation where some of the roads are not very wide, and it seems that Virginia isn't really into shoulders for bikes, bicyclists like in other states. So did they take that into consideration? I also want to thank Fire and Rescue and EMS for the lovely picnic they had and the great, great awards that were given out and good stories about the rescues that our fire department and EMS do in our community. And it was, it was a great time, and I want to thank all the award recipients. Well done. I also have been starting to meet with some of our realtors, Mr. Baird I met with today and some others. I am on a state committee about affordable housing, so I'm trying to get a feeling from all sides of the issue, realtors, land developer, what, what are their issues with affordable housing? Because when you go on the state level, there's a lot of people giving their opinions, but I wanted a little bit more and me being able to ask more detailed questions. So we do have another meeting in July, and so I, my intention is, once I gather this data, to actually present it at the meeting and say, here is King George's unique situation, and we're a little different than other localities. So to, just to get some feedback and bring some, some of our local concerns to the great statewide discussion about affordable housing and even taking away land use decisions from localities, which would be a detriment to all localities, I feel. The last one I wanted to say, I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Binder. Mr. Collins?
Good evening and thank you. Good to see everyone out tonight. The, I never thought much about the rumble strips until Mr. Buckley mentioned that this evening. If you're on the rumble strip, is it to the left of the white or the right of the white line? I'll talk to Mr. Beal and see what can be better done on that as far as bicycles, but as far as people's driveways and so forth where the rumble strips, I'll ask to keep them out of your yard. So they, it's actually a good thing for that particular purpose. Pyramid Healthcare, there was a request for update. My understanding is, well, maybe, Mr. Miller, you can address that.
From my understanding with discussing with Ms. Hall, they had additional comments that were requested of them by Fire and Rescue and also Mr. Young with the Engineering Department. As according to Ms. Hall, they are required to address those comments. I don't know the specific details of those comments that were required of them, so there's no construction going on, there's nothing at this point. They're still working through, you know, the process with the, with the Community Development Department. I would encourage you to contact Ms. Hall if you have some more specific questions about what the status is, is.
Thank you. And a few other things, if y'all were here earlier, with the Water Authority, you may have heard that they're going to be paying $100,000 fine to DEQ. That will come out of the people that are paying for the water and sewer. Plus, they also approved a $274,000 vehicle. So just to keep those things in mind, when we go forth with budget, there's, there's all kinds of things that get pushed into these things. So there's only so much money and there's only so many things that we can do. Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mrs. Kapka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here this evening and providing your comment. It's already been addressed by two of my colleagues, but yes, the rumble strip installation during this recent repaving project is definitely problematic, and I'm sure Mr. Beal will be hearing from many of us regarding that, and hopefully they can come up with a better process moving forward. I know they had the same issues or similar issues, I won't say the same because they don't do the rumble strips in the residential neighborhoods, but when they repaved some of our residential neighborhoods, there were a lot of issues with how that was done as well. Ms. Lovell, thank you very much for your comments. That everything, as far as revenues, you asked about the ambulance fee, the cigarette tax, it is all built into the budget. I would be happy to meet with you privately if you want to talk and have more questions. But I do believe we are posting all of that online as well as we normally do. So that's available online. Hopefully, we will be able to eliminate the license fee, that decal that we seem to need to pay $8 every year for no benefit, in my opinion. And Ms. Dirts and Ms. Becker, we heard a little bit about Pyramid, but I actually have a question, Mr. Miller. Do we know if they have figured out a way to actually pay their application fees?
No, it is current.
They are current.
They're current, yes.
They are up to date. They have made good on their financial obligations to the county with regard to any permits they need to acquire right now.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I too attended the King George Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Annual Awards Banquet and Picnic at Back Porch Winery on Sunday. Congratulations to all of the recipients. And I want to give a shout out on the training yesterday morning, as well as the live incidents that the department responded to using the rescue boat yesterday. So if you saw on Facebook, they had training in the morning with the rescue boat, and then they actually had two incidents they responded to. I think Mr. Stonehill sounds like took care of one of them before they got there. But they did have to enter the Potomac up on Roseland Road. They put the boat in and did have an actual incident that they responded to and recovered someone. And then I just have two appointments to make. First, Mrs. Tracy Martin tendered her resignation this week from the Smoot Library Board of Trustees due to personal reasons. So I move to appoint Mrs. Jessica Drinks to fulfill the remainder of Mrs. Martin's term that expires June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion, probably second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you. And one more, also on the Library Board of Trustees, I have an appointee whose term is set to expire at the end of this month. So I move to reappoint Mr. Ross Bonamy to a new term on the Smoot Library Board of Trustees upon expiration of his current term on June 30th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, probably second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapka. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for everybody coming out. One good thing about sitting in this seat is kind of everybody covers everything by the time you get here. But just thank you, Pyramid Healthcare, obviously you got your update. Ms. Lovell, thanks for coming in with your comments, and I guess if you stay longer, you'll hear a little bit more about the budget. Congratulations to the Fire Department. They did have their first rescue with their, with their new fireboat that they got just this spring, so it's pretty good. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. I'd just like to say thank you for everyone coming out. It's always nice to see a large crowd out here to partake in the governance of our county. I do believe all my colleagues did, I think, touch on all the issues, and I don't think I really have anything else to expound upon it. Obviously, the rumble strips, been hearing more of that recently. But so thank you for coming out and sharing that as well. The individual we spoke with, that was the first person I heard from, so now I've heard actually from three or four now. So it's continued to kind of expand. So it's, it's good to understand the impact, and his concern was noise, whereas opposed to Mr. Buckley's was with safety for pedestrian and cyclist. So it's good to also think of from those different perspectives. So thank you for bringing that forward as well. I appreciate it. Let's see, on May 17th, I participated in the strategy, strategy to action meeting at the base. Both myself and Mr. Minor went to represent King George County, and this is to sit down with the base and other local communities and just discuss the impacts both, both ways, or how we may impact the base, how the base impacts us, in order for them to formulate plans on how to maybe provide more better infrastructure to address those kinds of impacts, and then so we understand what kind of needs they have as well. So we had that on the 17th, and then on June 1st, we had a change of command. So I'd like to say thank you to Captain Copeland for the service he had provided as the captain of NSA SP for the past, I believe it's three years now, and served during the time of COVID, which I'm sure was very challenging for him. And just to say welcome to Captain Wilson, and look forward to the opportunity to have a relationship with him and interact with him in regards to the community and our concerns and how we can be good neighbors with each other. Other than that, I do would like to make a disclosure. So we have been talking about the budget, and we are going to have a public hearing tonight, so I wish to disclose that my wife is currently employed by the King George County School Board. Based on the disclosure previously given of this interest, this does not pose a legal conflict, and I can participate in budget decisions fairly, objectively, and in the public's interest. So that is all I had for my board report, and we will move on to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, probably second. Do we have any discussion about the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. County Attorney's Report.
Good evening. On May 17th and 18th, I had the opportunity to attend the Judicial Conference of Virginia as a guest attendee. It was a unique experience to meet and share and information presented to the Circuit Court Judges, Court of Appeal Judges, and Supreme Court Justices. I also had an opportunity to speak with an appellate attorney who has gave me a little, a little insight into the expansion of the Court of Appeals and the timing for their cases. So there was previous interest in tracking that case out of Henrico concerning hunting dogs. And so I spoke to her and she gave me her perspective on the likely time, timeline for that decision. So she, she said not to expect anything until the fall, likely. On that note, Supervisor Stonehill had asked staff to spread awareness that there is a public comment period that's currently underway by the Hound Hunters and Private Landowners Stakehold Advisory Committee. There's an electronic portal on the website of the Department of Wildlife Resources that's opened until June 23rd. If there's anybody interested in commenting on, you know, issues related to hound hunting and also to private landowners. So the, if you, rather than reading out a long URL, if you went to the DWR website and searched for Hound Hunters and Landowners SAC Stakeholders Advisory Committee, you would find a portal to submit comments, or I'm sure you could also send in your comments to the department as well. And lastly, I attended last night's meeting of the Landfill Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to report based on some of the discussion that was had at the last meeting regarding their bylaws. They did accept the bylaws that were recommended by this board.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lackey?
I do, Mr. Chair, if I may make an inquiry. Ma'am, where are we on bringing the MOU with Ralph Bunch Alumni Association back to the board for consideration, please?
Sure. So at the last meeting, I had reported that I'd circulated a draft and received consensus to share that draft with the Ralph Bunch Advisory, the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, and I received a response back that they are, they're, they're satisfied with the drafting. So I'd be ready to bring that back to the, to the board as early as the next meeting, if that's the will of the board.
As a follow-up, Mr. Chair, may I ask for consensus of the board to direct the county attorney to do so, please?
Is everyone amenable to bringing that back for the next meeting? Okay.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions for Ms. Lackey? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lackey. Believe we have any constitutional officers either. So we'll move on to public hearings. All right, so the King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold public hearings that have been properly advertised or receive public input regarding, one, case number 23-02-Z01, Amendment to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Allow Microbreweries, Cideries, Distilleries, or Wineries in Retail Commercial District C1 and General Trade District C2, Amendments to Sections 1.9 and 2.92. Two, Proposed Fiscal Year July 01, 2023 to June 30, 2024 Budget. And three, Proposed Tax Increase. I will first ask for staff report on each individual public hearing, and then we will open the floor for public comment at the time of each discussion for each public hearing. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before your comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment and legal requirements. So we will start with the first one, which is case number 230201, dealing with the micro wineries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Stewart, Jr., I'm a planner with the Community Development Office, and I will be presenting case number 23-02-Z01. One brief moment, please. Here we go. Okay. So this case is an amendment to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Allow Microbreweries, Cideries, Distilleries, or Wineries in the Retail Commercial District C1 and General Trade District C2, with proposed amendments to Section 1.9, Definitions of Terms, and 2.9.2, which is the C1 Retail Commercial Uses Permitted By Right. If you recall back to your January 17th meeting, you directed staff to amend the ordinance to include the use of micro winery in the commercial districts. Following this direction at its May 16th meeting, the King George County Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted to forward the case with a recommendation for approval. The current zoning ordinance allows for these establishments in the agricultural zoning districts where the products used for the manufacture of alcoholic beverages like beer, cider, liquor, or wine are grown on site. However, the ordinance does not permit these establishments where the products used for these alcoholic beverages are not grown on site in any zoning district. It's also worth mentioning that the microbreweries are already permitted in our current ordinance. This proposed text amendment would combine the use and definition to also include micro cideries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries. The first proposed amendment would be to Section 1.9, Definitions of Terms. Proposed definition would read, "microbrewery, cidery, distillery, or winery. A small-scale establishment primarily engaged in the production of alcoholic beverages, including beer, wine, cider, or other spirits on site for wholesale or retail sale. Beer production capacity shall not exceed 15,000 barrels per year. Production of distilled spirits, wine, or alcoholic cider shall not exceed 5,000 barrels per year. Microbrewery, cidery, distillery, or winery may also include a restaurant or public tasting room as an accessory use. Establishments must be licensed by the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority and shall operate in accordance with any requirements by the Code of Virginia or other applicable laws." The second proposed amendment would be to Section 2.9.2. That's the Retail Commercial Uses Permitted By Right, and this would include microbrewery, cidery, distillery, or winery. Additionally permitting microbreweries, cideries, distilleries, or wineries in the Retail Commercial District C1, it would automatically be permitted use in the General Trade District C2. That is specified in Article 2, Section 2.10.2, Item Number 1. And with that, we can end on the recommendation from the King George County Planning Commission and the Department of Community Development staff to approve case number 23-02-Z01, Amendment to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Allow Microbreweries- to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Allow Microbreweries, Cideries, Distilleries, or Wineries in the Retail Commercial District C1 and General Trade District C2. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for clarifications about the report? Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
In that case, I'm going to open the floor now for the public comment portion of this individual public hearing, or the micro wineries. So I don't have anyone on my sheet written down, but anyone that would like to, please feel free to come forth and provide your comments.
Bob Baird, 15316 Kings Highway, King George. I'd like to support the motion. It's a positive move on behalf of our citizens, tourist development of the county, and small business. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Julie Edgar. I live at 4250 Stafford Lane, King George, Virginia. Thanks. And I'm all for the micro winery, but we know that. So just kind of embrace it. That's it. Thank you.
Hello. Name's John Edgar, 4250 Stafford Lane, King George. I am also, as you know, for the micro winery. I do want to remind you that the way that I plan to do it is to bring grapes and juice from around the world and make it here in the county for sale. Thank you.
Julian Dirt, 16930 Village Lane, King George, Virginia. I'm for it.
Coons Campbell, Vernon Woods Drive, King George, Virginia. I too am for it. It'll be a nice asset. As Bob said, tourist, income, businesses. Let's do it.
Mr. Downs, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone else receive correspondence in regards to this public hearing? In that case, I will just also mention, Ms. Becker had also spoken during public comment that she was in favor. Just, I guess, have it recorded. In that case, though, I will close the public comment for this public hearing and bring it back to the board. Entertained a motion?
I move to, let's see, where are we? I move to approve case number 23-02-Z01, Amendment to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Allow Microbreweries, Cideries, Distilleries, or Wineries in the Retail Commercial District C1, General Trade District C2.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our second public hearing, the proposed fiscal year budget. Ms. Hahn.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As soon as Mr. Downs gets the presentation up, I'll get started. The budget process. In December of 2022, the county administrator requested departments and agency to prepare their budgets. In January, the departments and agencies submitted their budgets. January and February, the budget staff reviewed submittals and met with all the department heads and agencies. In February 2023, the county administrator also reviewed the submittals and met with departments and agencies. Budget work sessions began in March and continued through May of 2023. That was along with the Citizen Advisory Committee in present at those sessions. May 11th, the county administrator presented proposed budget scenarios, and the Board of Supervisors instructed staff to advertise for the public hearing. And tonight, we are conducting the public hearing, and we would like to adopt the PPTRA, but that is pretty much part of the rate public hearing. And by Code of Virginia, we cannot adopt the budget tonight. That would have to take place at least seven days after this public hearing, which the proposed plan for to adopt is at the June 20th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. Budget challenges. Again, as in last year, there was uncertainty over the Commonwealth of Virginia budget. There is an increased need for capital projects in excess of the landfill revenue. Maintaining public safety, recruitment, and retention. Inflation continues as a result of the pandemic. We also had increases in the regional jail and juvenile detention centers for their funding. The county continues to grow, overloading the, making more requests from county staff, and then of course, the schools. So the operating budget is an annual fiscal plan, providing actionable, concise information about county financial activities and policies. It serves as a roadmap to implementing the Board of Supervisors priorities. In preparing the fiscal year 24 budget, staff was mindful that the budget environment continues to feature a degree of economic uncertainty and continues to be a serious challenge. The FY24 budget continues the Board of Supervisors' policies for fiscal responsibility and service delivery. And some of the major concerns are public safety, recruitment, and retention, education, social services, employee compensation, capital projects, debt, and facility maintenance. Most of the fiscal year 23, which is the current year, revenues are on pace to exceed the budgeted amounts and to exceed the fiscal year 22 revenues. The fiscal year 24 budget includes a new revenue from a real estate increase associated with additional revenue for the schools and overall county growth. Fiscal year 24 budget continues investing in workforce with a cost of living salary increase in the amount of 5%. It continues to address core needs of a growing population impacting schools, public safety, social services, as well as county services. Fiscally responsible in accordance with county financial policies, the total county budget request for fiscal year 24 is $115,383,854, which is a 6.5% increase over the current year adopted budget. The schools' associated expenditures, including operating grants and cafeteria, are $62,990,934, which is an 8.14 increase over the current year adopted budget, and is 54.69% of the total budget. Non-school expenditures are $52,392,920, or a 5.59% increase over current year adopted budget, and is 45.31% of the total budget. The proposed budget includes a tax increase associated additional revenue for the schools. The advertised real property tax rate is an increase of four cents from 64 cents to 68 cents per $100 of total assessed value. Per the prior slide, the non-school expenditures are $52,392,920. Of that, 17.6 is for public safety, almost 8 million now for debt service, 6.2 for Department of Social Services, a little over 3 million for court services and constitutional officers, 2.5 for Capital Improvement Fund, and that includes funding for one major project, 2.3 for institutions, outside agencies, and the Department of Health, and 12.5 for general government operations, which include admin, finance, moot library, parks and rec, public works, tourism. So budget highlights. The property tax and other local revenue sources increased by 3.5 million. $24,272,299 in local funding is proposed to the schools. This is an increase of 3.1, or $3,172,299 over the current approved budget for this year. The school ADM is estimated at $4,537. Funding is included for $323,652 increase over the current year for both the regional jail and the juvenile detention center. Revenue from the state for constitutional officers was approved at 13% increase over the fiscal year 23 estimated revenues. Uncertainty as to the final state revenue numbers for county operations to include school operations and includes provisions for retiree healthcare to assist with recruitment and retention. Possible costs for fiscal year 24 are estimated at $68,461. So uncertainty as to the final state revenue numbers, the retiree health, recruitment, and retention at 68,461. There's also full year funding for three new positions, a deputy sheriff, a part-time administrative assistant for general properties, and a part-time events coordinator for tourism. Half-year funded, and it's also included for three new positions in the Department of Emergency Management and a part-time parks worker. Other budget highlights, the step grade for public safety will continue, but the board asked us to raise that step increase to 5%, and that's been included in the budget. The funding for a COLA salary increase for the rest of the county at 5%, and healthcare costs increased approximately 10%. Revenues. The state revenue is 42.7 million, or 37% of the county budget. $34,715,774 for the schools, 2.6 for social services, 1.3 for the sheriff, 341,323 for the Commonwealth Attorney, 302,408 for the clerk of the Circuit Court, 145,151 for the Commissioner of Revenue, 176,318 for the library, 113,394 for the treasurer, 74,000 for the registrar, 2,147,868 for the PPTRA from the state, and 751,473 in grants and other miscellaneous revenues. Here are our proposed revenues for fiscal year 24. An increase in general property taxes from 39.4 million to 41.7. Other local taxes, an increase from 10.6 up to 11.7. Licensings, permits, and fees. You'll see there is a decrease in this from 9 million down to 8.8. Part of that can be attributed to the funds for the landfill expansion have been totally collected after fiscal year 23, and that is no longer included in those revenues. And then other local revenue increased from 3.2 to 3.5. The state went from 41.2 to 42.7, federal from 4.6 to 4.7, and then non-revenue receipts from 30,465 to 1.9 million dollars. And that was using the general fund balance to balance the budget. For a total increase from 108,357,000 to 939 dollars to the 115,383,854. And this is just a representative of where the funds come from, 57% from local, 37 state, 4.1 from federal, and 1.66 from other. The expenditures. And here, the schools increased from 58 million to 62. Public safety from 16.1 to 17.6. Debt service, you'll see this increase from 7.3 to 7.9. Department of Social Services, you actually see a decrease in theirs from 6.5 to 6.2, and that is a result of lower need for the Child Services Act funding, and so that was decreased in their budget. Constitutional officers, 2.9 to 3.0. Public Works, 3.1 to 3.3. Capital improvements, that lowered from 4.1 to 2.5. And last year, that capital improvements included funding for the completion of the courthouse, as well as the public radio safety system. Institutions increased from 1.2 to 1.5. Parks and rec from 1.3 to 1.6. Moot library, 733,690 to 809,108. The health department from 317,667 to 333,550, and that was the first increase they requested in several years. And tourism fund from 117,000 to 154,295, for a total last year adopted, or current year adopted of 108,357,939 to 115,383,854. Thus, the revenues and expenditures are balanced. And here is the representative of the different departments. The biggest share is the schools at 54.69, and public safety at 15.33, and the other departments throughout the county. With that, I'll entertain any questions?
Mr. Collins?
Ms. Hahn, so if I recall correctly, in the work sessions in regards to the retiree healthcare, that was tabled and put off till next year. How did it get slid in here?
At the, at the budget work sessions, I don't believe it was tabled. We were requested to add it to the budget, and it was not cut from the budget. I don't think there was a consensus to remove it after it was put in.
I don't remember a consensus. I asked my colleagues, though, was there a consensus to remove it from this current year's budget?
No.
Okay.
But my understanding is said that we didn't, we're going to put that off till more study till next year. So we can go back and review the minutes on that one.
I do know that you did ask that the code enforcement officer was to be taken off.
Yes.
And, but I do not recall, and I don't believe there's any notes that would support that, that this item was taken off.
We'll go back and look at the minutes, see what they say.
Did anyone else have questions for Ms. Hahn before we open the floor for public comment? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. In that case, I will open the floor for public comment for the proposed fiscal year 2020, July 2023 to June 2024 budget. And I do have one individual who signed up, so we'll start with Mr. Brian Greagan.
Brian Greagan, Shiloh District. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all you do for the community. And I know this is a very difficult task, putting together the budget and picking who's going to get money, who's not, and how much everybody's going to get. I'm here just to express my support for the school budget and the 7% increase for the teachers and staff. I think it's, we're in teacher shortage crisis mode, and I think we have to keep up with the Joneses, so to speak, which is the neighboring counties that we usually try to compare ourselves to as far as teacher salaries are concerned. But I think we also have to compare ourselves with Charles County, which is across the bridge, and they're also a neighboring county, and their starting salary for teachers is quite a bit higher than our starting salaries in King George. And it doesn't seem like this teacher problem is going to go away anytime soon. And I think we need to, we need to keep up with that pace, just to at least have the opportunity to get first-year teachers to come here and hopefully get them to stay here. And it's just a supply and demand issue. You know, it's just like during COVID, there were shortages of everything. The prices went up. It's the same thing with teachers. And I'm not just saying that because I'm a parent of two daughters, even though I think this is a little more important to me than it would have been otherwise if I didn't have kids in King George County schools. But I love this community. I moved here from Charles County in 2019. I love it here. And I, and I just, I think the school system is fantastic, and I love the fact that I can know everybody in the community that helps the community function. And that's a big deal to me individually. And I know that having good schools will draw, you know, good people into the community. It will make a strong community. It will, it will, education is the key to having, you know, a successful life for a lot of people, was for my father. My father was very poor growing up, and he had an opportunity to go to college. And then I have the life that I have. He has the life that he has because of education. He has the life that he has because of education. So I think that we need to keep that, um, extremely, you know, important for, for the, for the community. But I understand that it is a large part of the, uh, of the budget, um, but I think it's, it's essential that we, uh, keep up with the Joneses, so to speak, as far as teacher pay and, and, and the budget is concerned.
Kim Dodge, six one five O, McCarthy Drive. Um, I appreciate all your work on the budget, but I feel it's a failure when our tax rates have to be increased. So I know we have a growing community, but that means they pay taxes too. So you got to look at the equation of, you know, when I see why we're having an increase. This gets said every year. Um, many people are on a fixed income, and I've been here fifteen years. My income has not changed in fifteen years, but my taxes keep increasing. After COVID, inflation is here, people are struggling, and, um, I, you need to take in consideration that we're not just an endless supply of money, that you work for us, um, we don't work for you, okay? The government works for the people, and we're not an open paycheck. And I disagree, and I wish there was more citizens up here to say, you take enough of our money, and you're going to learn, you're going to have to learn, like, we have to learn, the public citizens that are not on a socialistic system, where we have to work hard and earn our money. We have to do with what we make, okay? So, and I, and when somebody says, well, compared to other counties around us, we have lower taxes, uh, taxes, or we pay our teachers lower, well, we pay our teachers lower so we can have lower taxes, okay? Um, when you go to take a job, it should be for, you love educating children, okay? We're not doing the love of money. I just, the government just thinks the people are just, we can just constantly tax them to death, and, um, the people are hurting financially, okay? And everything's getting more and more expensive. And then the other comment was, um, so the cost of living is going up, and then people come from other counties and then say, well, we love everything here in King George, and we're glad you're increasing the taxes. I'm like, that doesn't make any sense. And then, um, you're leaving behind the younger couples. I heard about affordable housing. Younger couples that are getting married, they can't afford housing. What about our children? What are, what kind of future are we leaving for our children? If we just keep doing this, and it's crazy, it's going to collapse, because you cannot keep increasing it and just saying we have an endless supply of money. Maybe we need to come up with new ways to educate our children, new ways to do things, okay? Um, we, the government works for the people. The people don't work for the government, okay? And it's a failure that you're increasing our taxes again.
Ken Stroud, fifty-four oh five Kings Highway, King George, Virginia. So, couple comments. A gentleman that was advocating higher teachers' pay, I'm not against teacher salary, I'm not against people getting a pay raise, but you came from Charles County. I'm curious what the reasons leaving Charles County and coming to King George were, because a lot of people that I've talked to, they come to King George because the taxes are lower here and the cost of living is lower. So if we keep jacking up the cost, what's going to happen? The taxes are going to go up as well. We're going to have the same problem as other counties. The real estate tax increases that the county imposed, that was criminal, okay? It's no secret that the tax assessor that did the assessment, the other counties that he did, two other counties threw his assessment out, from what I understand, and they did it and went back, reverted back to the previous tax assessment. So there's a lot of scrutiny there. And then increasing that, increasing the taxes and then saying, okay, we're going to give people a discount. Not so sure about the way that that was handled either. Like, we're going to increase our taxes, and then we're going to discount it. So we, we look good. So I think there's some skepticism there, maybe some transparency for the citizens of the county would be beneficial, and how that tax assessment was done regarding the salaries and the way that, that people are paid. So it's cool in government that you get to vote and spend, uh, citizens' monies how you choose. In the commercial industry, whenever we are paying people, we have to be competitive. If your cost is too high, people don't buy your product. If your services are too expensive, you don't win contracts. So if you take that approach, whenever you're looking at, we're spending taxpayer money in the same way, being competitive, requiring people to be innovative, being efficient with that, and I'm not saying that you, you weren't either. I'm just saying that it's something that always has to be done whenever we're looking at the budget. I was here, I was in some of the meetings, so I know that, that you do that. But it's, it's an ever vigilant task in doing that. So, thank you.
Bob Baird, one five three one six, Kings Highway, King George. It's a catch-twenty-two situation. It's a no-win. Frankly, prices are going up. In fact, I was in a long discussion today with the price of housing, what's affordable, and what it takes for a couple, uh, or small family to live in this county, frankly, is criminal. As a retiree, I couldn't afford to buy into this county right now. Prices have gone through the roof. Um, in order to bring people to work in this county, whether it be as a teacher, as a mid-grade county employee, as a new hire at Dahlgren, the salary levels are what I would consider crazy years ago, but they're realistic today. So if we have to pay people to come into this county to teach, whether it's in, on, in the government sector, or whether it was the school system, we've got to be competitive. As much as I hate to pay taxes, the only way that we can pay, pay these people is to raise our taxes, it appears. So it's a catch-twenty-two. I appreciate the hard job you've got and what you've tried to do. I, I'm afraid we have to bite the bullet and pay it.
My name is Anna Maria Lovell, and I live in Presidential Lakes. I'm here also to support the teachers. When my children went to school, there was a little schools, and the teachers, um, they were underpaid. And so many of those teachers left to Charles County or Fredericksburg. But also, I would like the, the, um, be with teachers, they get good salaries to the teachers because life is, is very expensive in these days. They need, uh, very healthcare, they need, they take care of their families. But also, I wanted a, they pay good salaries to the Sheriff's Department. It's very important to me because the Sheriff's Department has been one of the greatest in here for, for my family and the rest of the King George. But also, you know, I will appreciate it and thank you for all the work you do, and I would like to support the, the school system. Thank you.
Sarah Aldaker, I live on Reagan Drive in Presidential Lakes in the Jameson Road District. Um, I just want to get up here and say I also support giving the teachers a seven percent raise. I've lived in this county for seven years. We moved here from my husband's job, um, from North Carolina. The reason we stay here is because of the school system. My son's a rising first grader, and I've been so impressed with the level of education he received this year. However, I know his friends who have parents who are teachers, and they can't afford to live in this county. They're teachers in this county, and they can't afford to live here. Um, it's safe in this county, but yet a lot of our deputies, EMT, fire personnel can't afford to live here. We have to pay them. We have to pay them the right amount. Um, I understand what everybody's saying. I get fixed income, I get a raised taxes, but it goes for the teachers as well. If they can't afford to live here, that's a problem. Um, so I just wanted to advocate for that, for these teacher raises. I think it's important, um, and as a parent, as a citizen, and as someone who cares about this county, as a former county employee, I think it's very important. So, thank you.
Do we have anyone else here for the public hearing on the budget? Well, we'll have another one after this about the tax rate.
Denise Manard, I live on Marmaduke Drive. Um, I didn't come with anything prepared, but I do have to answer the, the question about the man from Charles County. I've been here since ninety-five. All my kids went through this school system. Every year, we hear that we have to keep up with the other counties. We can't keep up with the other counties. We can't. Um, I loved your comment about you plan a budget and you stay within your budget. I have nothing, I'm not against giving the teachers a higher salary. I would be more, um, willing to get respect back in our schools, get some respect back for our teachers, and our teachers won't leave. I don't think they're leaving for money. Um, I hear other reasons as to why they're leaving. if we're having too many people move to this county and we can't keep up within our schools, stop building in our county. This is not the place I moved to back in nineteen ninety-five. It is just, it is not the same at all. Um, but you raised our tax rate last year. I don't remember living here with an increase within the next year, and you're, you're doing that to us. Everybody's hurting in the county. No one is getting an increase as much as you're raising our taxes. Um, I'm not saying this is an easy job. I'm not saying it is at all, but we need to stay within our means. And your debt, uh, the debt service has increased. Um, I think we should look into that. There's, there's other problems here, and, um, I, I'm not for an increase at all.
Julian Dertz, Village Lane, King George, Virginia. I just have a question. I got home today and my internet bill was raised. My water bill is now going to be raised. I live in the Dahlgren District, so I'm going to help pay the hundred thousand dollar fine, and now you're going to raise my taxes. If all of our utilities and our taxes keep going up, how are we going to survive as a county? How are more people going to come in here? So everybody's saying that they want their piece. You want four percent. My cable bill's up twenty dollars. My garbage went up four dollars. Everything keeps just going up and up and up. How can we come together as a county and stop it? Do we get a year just to stay the same? Thank you.
Ken Mead, nine two eight four, Carriage Lane. One thing I'm really troubled about, we, we had a lot of people come out here concerned about these taxes, concerned about how our taxpayers are being paid, but what I've seen here, none, none of you guys have taken notes. So my question is, when you make the decision about how to spend money, who are you listening to? Oh, there are some notes there. I saw, I saw Kathy over there have been taking a few. There's some that have been sitting back, and I thought I saw you look at your watch, like, are we boring you that much? Come on, it's our money. There's a question about the, uh, school teachers and the cost of education. I guess my question in the school classroom, it's a lot different from when I went to school up in Michigan, but what's the biggest task a teacher has to do now? Is it actually teaching the subject, or is it actually controlling the kids in the classroom? If it's an issue of controlling the kids, we need to defer that back into the houses. Get the parents involved. You can't control your kids. They're not going to sit in a public classroom and take up our taxpayer money to teach them how to behave. Another issue about, uh, where to raise money. If you come to King George County, obey the laws. How about increasing some of these fines on some of the people that disobey the laws here? Let it be known, come to King George, y'all need to obey, okay? That's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Dins, do we have anyone online for the budget public hearing?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe the entire board is in receipt of two emails. We were all copied on, one from a Ms. Yvonne Richard of today, and one from a Ms. Dee Strauss, dated yesterday. I, I won't read them, but I will enter them into the record of the public hearing, and both of them were in support of the school budget, or I'm sorry, the bud, the county budget overall. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, uh, sent those to Ms. Fish before the meeting, so she should have those already. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And I will bring it back, and so is there any further discussion? As Ms. Hahn said, it will require a seven-day, um, period where we can't vote on until after that time, so does anyone have any questions or any comments that they would like to make about the budget before we move on to the next public? Yes, ma'am?
I would, I would, and those in the audience that can hear, that are watching online or might watch it later, I, uh, would love to hear comments through email or even just call me on the phone if there's any other citizens that would like to, um, weigh in on the budget and the proposed tax increase. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our third public hearing, the proposed tax increase. Ms. Hahn?
So this public hearing will be short. These are the, um, and these tax rates are by calendar year, not by fiscal year. So, um, and that's why tax bills have not gone out, because we have not adopted the tax rate for calendar year twenty twenty-three. Um, so in fiscal, for, in calendar year twenty-two, the real property is at sixty-four cents, proposed to go to sixty-eight cents. The personal property machine is three twenty-five, the machine and tools, two fifty, mobile homes going from sixty-four cents to sixty-eight cents. The personal property and machine and tools remain the same, and all rates are, are based on a hundred percent, uh, on a hundred dollars of assessed value. And the PPTRA rate will remain the same as the current twenty-four percent, as we did not increase, um, there's not a, a request to request, to be, a request to increase the personal par, property tax rate. And that's all I have for that public hearing.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hahn about the presentation before we move on to that actual public hearing? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn. In that case, I will open the floor for the public comment for our last public hearing in regards to the proposed tax increase. I do have one individual who signed up, and so we'll start with her, Ms. Carrie Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Carrie Gonzalez, and my address is eighty-one sixteen Oak Crest Drive. I'm here this evening to ask you to approve the currently advertised tax rate. Though woefully inadequate, I implore you to not consider dropping it further. The budget you're currently set to approve will again dramatically underfund our schools to the tune of three million dollars. Every year the schools are underfunded, the gap the following year grows larger, and the price paid for underfunding becomes more unsustainable, as if we were not already chronically underfunded as a result of repeated budget cuts year, year after year. We will continue to educate the future of this county on a shoestring budget. How about graduation this year? I know most of you were there. It was pretty nice, right? Interestingly, having graduation at the Fred Stat Stadium is not any more expensive than renting PA equipment to hold the ceremony in the football stadium. Did you know that the King George County School Budget that you approve cannot even afford to pay for the graduation ceremony for our seniors? Did you know that it's paid for using high school activity funds? Did you know that the dinner that those of you who attended the graduation ceremony consumed was not even paid for by your tax dollars? That it was paid for by student purchases at vending machines, by spectators at our sporting events, by community members who choose to invest in our school fundraisers? I'm curious about that, how that knowledge makes you feel. I am proud of King George County schools. I am proud to raise my children in this King George County. I'm proud to call King George County home. I'm proud to drive my car around with a King George School magnet and show the world that King George County Schools is a school division to be proud of. It pains me that it seems like you, our locally elected officials, are not as proud of our schools in our county. It doesn't seem like you're proud of our first responders and members of law enforcement, but I hope I'm wrong. But it seems to me that if we were proud of our public institutions that make our lives possible, that you could stand in front of your communities and constituents and advocate for appropriate and adequate tax rates and funding levels, funding levels for our county departments, especially for our schools and our county's greatest resource, our children. Taxes are always the hot button topic, but when you do the math, the actual impact that tax rate increases have could be argued as not so insurmountable. Understanding that the dollar impact the tax rates increases have on household budgets are directly proportional to the value of one's taxable property, theory supports that taxes should be properly equitable according to income and assets. A little quick math for me calculates that the proposed real estate increase for my, for this year to be about, for me, to be about $220. I think, I thought my vehicle taxes might go up by about $20, but it looks like maybe that's not the case. So my numbers are off a little bit. But considering that that tax increase, I believe, was going to generate about two-some million dollars of revenue for the county, that means that fully funding our schools would cost me personally about another $30 a month. So for say $50 a month total, our schools could be fully funded. We could staff all of our positions, we could pay our teachers. I bet many other community members would similarly ante up. Not all, understandably, but many. At the last budget session, some of you made comments about being biased because you didn't have children in our schools. I'll skip that. Either way, it's a no-win situation. Someone will be dissatisfied. I appreciate that. It's a hard decision. But I please ask you, do not drop the tax rate further. Thank you.
So every year I come in here and fight the increase in tax rates and teachers come here and argue why they need a raise. And this makes no sense to me when I run businesses. Raises for teachers, that's their employment. When they get employed, they agree to work for a certain salary. And then in private industry, companies, when they make a profit, give them a raise if they're a good employee. And then sometimes they get bonuses based on outcome. So the teacher asked, how do we feel that graduation is funded by what would be called commerce through, I guess, sells of activity, food items and other activities? I think that's great and I think the government should look into ways so that we do not have to increase our tax rate this year. How can other ways be to fund things with fundraisers and more industry or stuff like that? I think the public schools, you know, all the way from preschool through high school should come up with other ways to also support the huge cost. And we do pay a lot of money for the schools. They get a lot of money. And for them to say, we don't appreciate them or we don't appreciate the sheriffs or the fire, we appreciate them all. Look at the numbers that we're spending on that. And then for somebody to tell me, I can afford $30 more a month or something like that, they don't know my budget, they don't know my finances. And no, I can't because every company's telling me, you can afford $20 more, you can afford this. It's a failure if you increase that tax rate this year. And you need to come up with other ways if you have to spend that money or you need to cut stuff out of the budget. You have seven days and you need to make it that the tax rate does not get increased. And I don't like the teachers coming in here and arguing the tax rate that, that is for their pay, their salary pay, okay? It's a portion of the budget. That is between them being hired in the deployment with the school board, okay? What salary they're going to make and when they're going to get raises. Now, I understand the school board has to put in a budget and that they're putting in the raises there, but I don't think coming here and arguing, go ahead and keep, every year they say, raise the taxes because I want a pay raise, raise the taxes. I, I've never worked for a company where I say, well, raise the price of the product because I want more money. I mean, that does, that's not how it works. So, and then for teachers also to tell me what I can afford, I disagree with that too. Because again, it's like we have to give them a blank check and they just keep taking our money and taking our money. The taxpayer says no. We say no.
Ken Stroud, 5405 Kings Highway, King George, Virginia. Sure, the question about why teachers are leaving, that's a good question. I'd be curious to know that myself, why they're leaving, because it's not always about money. There's, there's other things to drop somebody their job. The pride in the county, there's a lot of pride in the county. And I, I don't know if, if the pride in the county is based off of how much money people pay in taxes or not. But the answer shouldn't always be to increase taxes first. There's other ways. One thing that private civilians have to do, if you want to buy a new car, you want to spend more money, we have to do, you have to earn more money. Okay? That isn't necessarily increasing taxes. There's other ways of doing that. And that would be bring industry to the county. And I don't, I don't, maybe I missed the county meeting where we briefed the industries that are coming into the county, the revenue that's coming in in the next year, what industries are coming in at 2024 that the county's bringing in that's going to offset the taxes that are coming in? Because that would be a good thing to know and maybe that would alleviate some of the, some of the impact of why people are, or their concerns about taxes if they saw how that the county's bringing in an industry to offset those taxes. And what the long-term plan is to replace the income that's coming in from the landfill and things like that. So whenever we look at the money that's coming in, the money that's being charged on taxes, and, and I don't think that it is irrelevant that taxes are going to go up. I think people understand at some point they're going to go up, but it's not always how much is spent, it's what it's spent on. So, thank you.
Me again. I never thought I'd be talking this much at a meeting. I think I just came to the wrong one. Julian, Village Lane. My question's not for you guys, it's for the teachers in the room. When I was in high school, I had to pay for my graduation. It cost me about $500 and that was like 35 years ago. I live in a neighborhood and I've never once had any kid come to my door from any school with a fundraiser. Do they not do this anymore? I have kids from churches coming that are going on missionaries that I don't mind giving them money to. If the schools need more money, they can figure out ways to raise money for themselves instead of continuously coming up here and asking for our property taxes to be raised. I was in sports in school, we had to raise money. Have any of you guys had anybody come knock on your door for anything? Any school fundraisers? I haven't seen a school car washed. I've never seen anything in this county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Dinesh, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence for this public hearing to be entered into the record? Okay. And I will close this public hearing. Ms. Hahn?
So this one you can vote on tonight and I will say that it's, the sooner that you vote on the taxes, tax rates, then the treasurer's office and the commissioner of revenue can get the tax bills out to the citizens in time. Of course, normally taxes are due June 5th, which was yesterday. And so I'm not sure of all the, the rules for them, but they do give an extension when the tax rate is approved late. Are there any questions? Any further questions?
Does anyone, does anyone have questions for Ms. Hahn? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board if there's a desire to entertain it tonight or would like to hold off. That's my call. Okay. So we'll hold off until the next meeting then. Okay. That's the end of our public hearings. We'll move on to presentations. Sure. Well, we'll, Mr. Gonzalez asked, we'll take a five-minute recess.